Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I got the T-shirt to prove it. And actually, the back says, does anyone know what date is? Does anyone really care?
Oh. I think I've heard that before.
It's kind of paraphrasing Chicago.
Chicago, yeah, yeah. It's not paraphrase, it's direct quote.
I think it was time, not day.
Oh, you're right, you're right.
And Stephen, you showed us that shirt before when the COVID had only been going on two weeks and we already felt like that.
Yeah.
Now it's what, 10 weeks or whatever?
Let me call this June 15th meeting of the Congress Select Board to order. Thank you. Our first item on our agenda is the consent agenda, and these are minutes to approve. April 16th, 2020 executive session not to be released. April 23rd, 2020, and April 30th, 2020, May 7th, 2020, May 14th, May 25th, 2020 open sessions. May 25th, 2020 executive session not to be released, approval of town accountant warrants, and certificate of recognition for Eugene Chang. Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
I would like to ask Jane if you would like to say something about Mr. Chang.
I just want to wish him well. He's leaving service to the town on the PEG Access Advisory Committee to move to Hawaii. I'm sure many of us are somewhat envious, at least for a visit. And we appreciate his service of the PEG Access. I think that these issues will be difficult to fill.
Good, we're doing, we're doing. We're doing D. So there was a motion on the second. Would the clerk please draw the roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you. I note that it passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is the Town Manager update. Mr. Town Manager.
Hi, good evening. I'll be, I'll be brief. We are focused, really, most of our time is focused on staying current with the phases of reopening, both from an organizational standpoint, meaning reopening town operations. In fact, just before this, Kate and I were on a call with our senior management team, talking about a new plan for custodial services for the town because we had a lot of different, there was a mix and match of approaches to each building, and so we're trying to kind of consolidate that approach to make sure that the services are equitable and, you know, compliant with not only the guidelines that have been issued by the governor, but also sufficient to keep employees and residents safe. And so that's something we'll be moving forward with in the near future. We're also working closely with the business community to support restaurants that want to reopen or that want to open for outdoor seating. There's an agenda item on that here in a few minutes. But there's, I know Concord Together, which is a group of businesses that have kind of formed to help, help support the business community during this very difficult time. They are in the process of doing a community survey. In fact, I just received some results of that, but they're being, they're being, they're being very proactive in, you know, making connections with businesses. And we're going to try and figure out every way we possibly can to help local business survive and support them in any way the town can. From, you know, being able to provide resources to facilitate outdoor dining, streamlining processes, you know, promoting, maybe, maybe create some special events that are socially distant and safe. And so these are the, like I said, this is where most of the time is occupied right now is in the space of looking forward to reopening. One of the things that is reopening, well, the other thing is I do want to, I do want to commend the community. We did reopen a lot of our recreational amenities, and either I'm out of the loop or people are really doing a good job, abiding by the guidelines because I have not received as many, I have not, I'm not receiving the same level of complaint about lack of social distancing or face coverings as I was before. And I just hope that means people are doing the right thing. And so I think that that's a tribute really to Concord as residents and making sure that they're do, I mean, I think the case numbers nationally are, you know, are, I think, causing, I'll say alarming, I don't want to be alarmist, but what we've been, what we've been talking about in terms of reopening and being careful, I think that's being, that those fears are being played out in other parts of the country, even though Concord's data looks very good. So we are still watching the bigger picture for COVID-19 and making sure that we're taking steps in a precautionary way. One of, and I do have Kate here, one of the things we did want to touch on as part of this update was reopening of White Pond, which is coming up this week. Okay, if you wanted to weigh in on that?
Sure. This is Kate Hodges, Deputy Town Manager. So as far as the reopening, we are scheduled to open this Saturday, June 20th, pending the Board of Health approval and inspection, which is happening on Wednesday of this week. The hours of operation will be from 10:00 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. It will be members only, as it was in years past, and a reservation will be required, which is new this year. So persons who have a membership can go on and receive a time and plot in advance. Reservations for any day begin four days in advance, and reservations have to be done prior to the visit. And reservation can only have the members in attendance. So groups no longer, individual groups can be no larger than 10. The reservation system, we believe, will allow for about 75 people at a given time, based on an average party size of five people, or 225 visitors per day. Now, I know that we've received quite a bit, and I'm sure the board, and I know Stephen has too, people who have noticed some things going on for a number of months, people really utilizing the property. So typically, in years past, White Pond's driveway and much of the parking area was always open. And one of the reasons for that is because the state boat launch access was required to remain open for the patrons early in May. And I think, you know, due to the fact that kids were out of school and others were coming home from their schools, it became sort of a place where kids could get together in that they could drive their cars all the way down, or at least park parallel on the driveway and very, very likely, you know, avoid being seen, at least for passersby on Plainfield Road. So, you know, it was a steady increase in activity, but there was also a steady increase in vandalism and people frankly not using the property as it was intended. So we, in conjunction with the police and the Town Manager's Office, decided to make the decision to close the entrance gate, which we thought would at least detract people from driving down and, you know, having to carry a very heavy cooler or whatever else that you were bringing down. We're very thankful to have very conscientious neighbors to the White Pond beach area, and so they would certainly be calling that in, and they did, to the police department. So that helped a bit until the folks who rely on fishing or are used to that started to complain both to us and to the state. And so the state was fairly adamant early on that they wanted us to reopen the gate and just station someone or someones down there to keep only people that are able to fish. And that wasn't really something that we could do, given we were in the middle of pandemic. And so I actually ended up contacting and talking to the Director of the State Department of Fisheries and Wildlife and kind of filling him in more candidly on what was going on. And he agreed that closing for the month of May didn't seem as bad as he had thought, but he asked us to put up signage that said that if you wanted to walk your belongings in, that the boat launch area for fishing was still open. And so there was some consistency, but they asked that we reopen it on June 1st, which we did. So since then, we have observed many people respectfully using it, but still a number of people who are not. Some of it mostly comes on when we have gorgeous weekends, like we did this weekend, and it's trash, et cetera. And, you know, frankly, we have our custodial and park staff sort of working overtime to try to get a bunch of other things open. And so having them, you know, come down on overtime and work on, you know, picking up the trash that people are leaving just wasn't a priority at this time. But we're hopeful that all of that will end because we will be open seven days a week, starting on Saturday. And the crew and I, Ryan Keane, Recreation Director, Ryan Orr, our Facilities Director, and then the facility staff will be down there tomorrow in preparation for our inspection, setting stakes and lining out boxes that people can sit in, virtual boxes that people can sit in, which are socially distanced from one another per order of the, of the governor. They're going to be about 10 by 10 blocks. And again, we should expect that if every block is filled, it's about 75 people. And if every block is filled for about four hours or so, which is the average beachgoers, you know, length of stay, it'd be about 225 visitors a day. And to date, we have sold 450 family passes, which represents approximately 1,200 or so people. So I think people are excited to, to be able to recreate down there.
Kate, one question, a couple of questions, actually. First, thank you. I know that there's been a lot of, a lot to, to cover from the recreation perspective and opening up. And yes, there obviously have been, as the liaison to the White Pond Advisory Committee and, and other White Pond discussions, there have been a lot of concerns raised recently about, about the opening and therefore the attention paid to usage. How, how is, what's the, I mean, this is just pure curiosity. How do we maintain social distancing when swimming? How does that work? How does that spill out? And I mean, blocks of people, that doesn't translate into the water very well.
Right, yeah. So obviously, that was one of the, one of the initial things that we said, well, we can keep people in this lovely box here on the, on the beach. And frankly, that will, that remains to be seen because I'm not quite sure that I, my children would want to remain playing in only the sand in their box. But as far as when they are swimming, we're really going to rely on the lifeguards to remind people gently and politely. But, you know, it really has to be self-policing. And I think that this is a, going to be a good exercise in people's ability to self-police in a way that is non-threatening and not nasty to their neighbors. But because of that, we've stationed a ranger of sorts, not really, but, you know, more of a manager of sorts down there, particularly during the busier times and on the weekends, as well as the waterfront director, so that it isn't just youth lifeguards having to deliver the message to adults, because that, that can be uncomfortable for everyone. But certainly, we want people who work for us to find this to be a positive experience, and so we don't want to set them up. So we're trying to take action and precautions that way. The only thing I can tell you is if people like what happened at the beginning, we have the gates open. If you can use it respectfully, that's great. If you can't, I think we'll probably have to come back to the Town Manager, the Board, or both, and explain what we have as a situation going on, and we'll have to make a determination as a community about what to do. But I, I'm really hopeful that we're not going to get to that point.
Susan?
Kate, yes, thank you for all, all the, all the work you've put in for this. I just had one question. If you have a reservation for a particular day, you could stay there the whole time. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Stephen, did you have additional updates?
So I didn't, we didn't put it on the agenda, but I know that there was some interest in hearing a little bit about the Water Resources Management component to the MVP grant that we, that the Board considered and supported last week. Alan is here if people wanted to hear a little bit about that. So Alan, and if you wanted to just give a brief summary of what the water resource, water resource protection components of that project is?
Yeah, so, good afternoon, Alan Cathcart, Director, CPW. Stephen mentioned, we are submitting an application to Executive Office of Energy Environmental Affairs, EEA, for an MVP grant, and that's a municipal vulnerability, municipal vulnerability preparedness grant. The town has had a few forays into these related issues where several years ago, we got a grant to do some climate assessment evaluation and vulnerability. During that time, stakeholders got together and identified water resources as a priority. I'm just trying to understand how drinking water, wastewater, stormwater interrelate and sort of affect our long-term impact and resiliency to climate. So working with Kate Hanley and other players in town, including Delia K., the Natural Resources Group, as well as including planning, we're submitting an application to allow us to develop, it's a long-range plan to look at all of the above, drinking water, wastewater, stormwater, and really a 20, 50-year horizon. The interest is to understand where we're spending time and resources. There's lots of money that we spend towards infrastructure improvements. There's monies we spent towards water supply, wastewater treatment, and increasingly in stormwater management. And we're trying to develop a plan that can really set the course for the town for the long range. We are looking at two-phase request. This particular grant allows for two fiscal years of support. Fortunately, the town is prepared to undertake this. We're looking, and the total ask is $1.2 million for the entire initiative. The town is responsible for 25% contribution. That can be in the form of in-kind service as well as cash. We do have some resources within the wastewater fund where we can help seed this effort, but we believe with the support from staff as well as volunteers in the community, we'll probably do pretty well on the in-kind services as well. This really allows us to be strategic in our climate resiliency, as well as our water resource management. And it was intended to be very inclusive and bring a number of stakeholders, not just from the community, but from the state, who have interests. And we're really trying to develop a model that will not just be used for Concord, but for other communities as well. So that's the overview. If you have any specific questions, I'll certainly entertain them, but I think that was, Stephen, my understanding of the ask.
Alan, that's, sounds terrific. I have a question that not only applies to what you're working on, but other things that come up like this, where we have opportunities to do some strategic planning. Here's a case where, you mentioned there is a 25% match, and you talked about how that can happen. Built into this strategic plan, are you also projecting the monetary costs of individual components of this plan going forward that may well be above and beyond your usual budgeting process?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. The, the plan is intended to, when I talk about strategic investment, we're looking at millions and millions of dollars of investment in our infrastructure, whether it's drinking water, wastewater, or stormwater. This is, if we can get the state to support 75% of our plan, you know, it's a two-year process, we intend to save millions over the years. And really, the biggest challenge is not having stranded investment. We spend lots of money in one particular regulatory silo, and then no longer have other funds we may need for a better sort of cost benefit. So the strategy is to use the plan to inform real money that's going to be spent over the next 10, 20 years in capital improvements. That's where the savings is going to be. And this, this initiative is something where more and more communities are identifying it as a, a need. Literally, the evolution of these, these various regulated water sectors is becoming more and more costly to respond to some of the drivers, whether it's quality, drinking water quality, quality is wastewater discharge on the environment, or stormwater management, where with the MS4 permit presently, that's a program that is involved assessment of existing conditions, and the big money is going to be spent in the next five to 10 years on stormwater. And so this is going to help inform, really, where do we prioritize and agree to as a community where we're going to spend those, those millions of dollars. So we think if the state can assist with the upfront planning, we think if it's a model, other communities would benefit. I know Concord likes to set the tone, and I think when you're talking with climate, there's really a good opportunity to really understand both droughts and flooding events, you know, affect all of the, the water sectors that we deal with.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Cathcart? Thank you, Alan. Stephen?
That's it for me.
All right, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is remarks by the chair. I do have a few. First, I would like to note with sadness the passing, passing of Arthur Stevenson. Arthur was a longtime resident of Concord. He served on the planning board for 12 years. He was a selectman for six. He was town council for 14 years, moderator for eight years, treasurer of the library, member of the Trinity Episcopal Church, and of course, the town's honored citizen in 2001. And everybody who knew him commented on his commitment to town government and his unbelievably quick and sharp wit. And so we will miss Arthur a lot. Second, I will report, and Jane will elaborate on it, I think, during the liaison reports, the Declement Action Report draft has been submitted, so it will be in a public comment period. And I know, Jane, you'll comment a little bit more on that a little bit later. I would also like to note and thank Colonel Chad Ellsworth, who's Commanding Officer at Hanscom Air Force Base. The chain of command's coming up. Mr. or Colonel Ellsworth will be leaving and be replaced by Colonel Stevens. At July 24th, I will be attending that ceremony. Next, I would like to congratulate the winners of the town election this year. New Select Board Member Matt Johnson. Carmen Reese was re-elected as Town Moderator. And Fatima Mizdad and Alexa Boland Anderson were elected to the school committee. So on behalf of the Select Board, we're heartily congratulations to all of you. I would also like to report that the Junction Village Christopher Heights Project was awarded $7.5 million in tax credits, which was what they were hoping for, and that should net them about $6.3 million. So that's very good news. Next, I would like to state that the two members of the Select Board, the Town Manager, met with, and a council met with the Estonbrook Road property owners and their council last Friday to discuss reopening the road and also settlement. I think it would be fair to characterize it as a very constructive meeting, and we look forward to moving ahead with this as quickly as we can. And finally, I would just state that this Wednesday, day after tomorrow, I will be holding the chair's breakfast. And so that will be at nine o'clock rather than the usual start time at 7:30. So those are all of my remarks. The next item on our agenda is to recognize the achievement of a number of young people at the high school, all receiving a National Merit Scholarships from the National Merit Scholars Program, I think mostly as semifinalists. So our heartiest congratulations go to Elise Dehony, Solis Flory, Carson Dutwiler, Sarah Hoover, Madeline Mueller, and Emma Saban. Those are quite, quite, quite an accomplishments, and you should all be, along with your parents and friends, quite proud of you. Next, I would like to, the item on our agenda is authorize the Town Manager to approve outdoor dining applications. As you know, last week at a meeting, we approved the outdoor dining application of 80 Thorough, and since then, the applications have been coming in. And the reason for putting this on our agenda and proposing this particular motion is, is that these will continue to come in and are kind of time-sensitive. Once they've been approved by the various town offices that are necessary, they come to the Select Board. But rather than have to wait for a weekly meeting to approve these, I believe it would be a good idea just to authorize the Town Manager. Other towns have already done that, authorize their Town Manager or Town Administrator to go ahead with this. So that's the agenda item, and I would, are there questions or comments about this? I think we've got an application for Woodhole Table, 80 Paparazzi, the 99, maybe others, those are the ones I know about.
Mike, if I could just make a quick comment on this. In, in looking at what other communities are doing, you know, we're trying to stay ahead of this to the greatest, to the greatest extent possible. And, you know, there are certain communities that are, I think, a little further ahead than us in some ways. You know, when you look at the full suite of things, I think Concord probably is further ahead in some communities with, with summer recreation programs. And, you know, we talked about White Pond being ready to open. That was our focus, as you recall, when we talked about reopening. Our focus was really outdoor spaces and the library, which I think were important to, that was where we were generating the most feedback. But now it's clear that, that our business community needs more support. And so we're kind of shifting our priorities to helping the, the local business community and working with them to be prepared to meet any needs they have that they identify, but also trying to anticipate some of their needs as well. And like I said, in talking to other managers who have seemed to be a little further ahead of us on some of these things, their boards, and of course, this is all temporary because we're in a state of emergency, but their boards have authorized them to use the authorities given by the governor's orders to select boards. We have developed a application checklist that is reflective of the, of the requirements of the state. Most of the requirements to do this are state requirements, not local. And so we have an application checklist that captures all of that. We have an internal review process that's pretty efficient. So public, you know, police, fire, building inspector, Town Manager's Office. So it's not just going to be a kind of wave of wands, you know, drive-through process. It is, it'll be quick, but it also is also thorough enough to make sure that we are being mindful of potential safety and liability issues. One of the things we've done is we've ordered through CPW, we've rented, what, 75, six and a half feet long steel barriers, like fences, that are, they're freestanding or interlocking, depending on how they have them set up. And we can have those available for restaurants that may need some separation between patrons and, you know, parking areas or whatever. We're also looking at ordering some, we don't, turns out we didn't have a lot of Jersey barriers in stock, so we're ordering some more of those in anticipation of being able to maybe block some parking spaces or potentially even close a street for a special event or street festival. Right now, we don't really have the equipment to do that quickly, so these are the types of things we're building up. And so the, the idea of getting this authority is really, and I sent the motion out a little while ago that I had asked Mina to prepare because I want to make sure that it touches all the bases and we don't have an unintended legal or liability consequence. So it's temporary while we're in this position, and then if the Board grants it to me, to the Town Manager's Office, we can then get these applications and turn them around relatively quickly without worrying about meeting postings and stuff like that.
Good, thank you. So do any of you have questions about this? I would note that in addition to those restaurants who are applying, there are already restaurants in town who are already authorized for outdoor dining. Trails and Cafe, for example. So we're starting to see a lot of that kind of happen. And I was also note that a number of our retail establishments are open using the guidelines provided by the Commonwealth. So I would urge all of our fellow residents here, if we're going out and doing some shopping, I hope you will shop here in town and help support, help support our businesses so that they can be prosperous again as we come out of this. But are there any questions? Yes, Terry, and then Linda.
So I, I think this is a great idea. Instead of having to convene a Select Board meeting for each restaurant or making them wait till our next meeting, this is a great way to streamline. And Stephen, you mentioned a police, fire, building. I'm just curious whether the Board of Health or the zoning board be involved?
Board of Health.
Yeah, the Board of, the Board of Health does review and sign off on this one.
I think we, I think this application was shared with the Select Board, wasn't it, Stephen?
I'm not sure. We didn't have it together for 80 Thorough, but if But if you, I can certainly share the, you know.
I saw a draft of it as it was being, as you were trying to get the various. John, I wondered if you, could you, you know, send that along to the board?
Sure.
See, it's not onerous, but it's comprehensive and sort of touches all the bases. And then does require specific written approval of various agencies. I think you might have even gotten emails today from some of the people approving them.
Great. What about zoning?
Were you finished, Terry?
No, I just, the Board of Health, great. I just was curious whether we need, I know before.
That's the building, the building inspector does that part of it.
Okay, super. Thanks.
Well, you know, I suppose you, Stephen and Mike have mentioned we're doing everything we can to support the businesses, which is terrific. Stephen, I don't know if you had a chance to see or talked with Belmont in terms of what they were, select board was having to have to meet today. Because while the businesses were happy that there was some street activity, now, you know, be able to eat out, dine outside, there were some adjacent retailers who were upset that the, you know, street was being closed off in Belmont's case. So, you know, it's a, it's a challenge to keep everyone happy. And, but I know that we're doing our best to support the businesses.
Well, Linda, if I may, it's an excellent point. And I think I've mentioned that here before. You know, the Economic Vitality Committee has been meeting, and Susan can comment on that if she wants. But in discussion with businesses, I said, you know, if a group of businesses on a particular block want to close a street for an event or for something, you know, and we can figure out traffic, we're ready to, we're ready to do that. But it takes businesses talking to each other to say, hey, the six of us on this block decided this would be the right approach. We can make it happen quickly. It's just, you know, like you said, just going in. And the concern I've had is creating an unintended negative consequence for other businesses by not really having a good feeling. And, you know, we're really trying to ramp up our economic vitality efforts. That was something that Invision Concord talked about. You know, we added a tourism position. That is going to be elevated in the FY21 budget to an economic vitality coordinator position. But before that, the town didn't have a lot of economic development, you know, apparatus. And so there's a little bit of playing catch-up in that regard. And so that's where I do feel like maybe we are a little bit behind or I'm a little bit behind in, you know, in some of this. But I really just, the businesses can really be helpful. And that's where I think Concord Together can play an important role, is playing an important role in providing that conduit of information between businesses in the town. But yeah, I mean, I think that the places where streets have been closed successfully are places where businesses got together and said, you know, make this happen.
Right. Are there other questions on this?
Not a question, just an update. The Board of Health piece on the outdoor restaurants is going to be discussed tomorrow with the Board of Health meeting. So it's all, it's all lining up.
Okay, great. Thank you. Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion. Linda, do you have it?
I do.
Thank you.
Move that the board authorize the town manager to approve the applications from licenses that serve alcohol for on-premise premises consumptions to extend said licenses premises to include outdoor premises consistent with the governor's COVID-19 orders, number 35 and 37, the Alcohol Beverage and Control Commission's guidelines for extension of premises to patio and outdoor areas, and other applicable state laws that may not be waived pursuant to either of the foregoing. This authorization and all applications approved by the town manager under this authorization shall expire no later than November 1, 2020, or when said order 35 is rescinded, whichever is sooner, at which point the applicant's licensed premises will revert to the licensed premises in effect prior to such approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates? I think you're on mute. Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you. And I note that it passes unanimously. Yes, Susan?
I just had one question about that. If you're a restaurant that doesn't have a liquor license, wants to do outdoor dining, you can still do the application, right? It just would.
Yeah, but the extension of licensed premises only applies to those who have liquor licenses. So I could not, you know, I, so even the select board couldn't extend the licenses, but grant a new license to someone starting outdoor dining, even with the emergency orders. It has to be, and I think, I thought the board did receive this, but I did, we did get a pretty detailed analysis from town council that they had worked on for a couple of communities that really lay out. It really isn't just, I mean, it seems like it's a bit of a free-for-all when you see what's happening in the communities. But there is, the state does have some requirements that aren't burdensome, but they are important. And so I think if you have a restaurant and you want outdoor seating, but you don't have a liquor license, this can't get you one for that.
Okay, thank you.
So in addition to the compliance with the town, these restaurants still have to comply with all of the guidelines provided by the governor and his stage two plan for reopening. All right, thank you all very much. The next item on our agenda is.
Mike, if I may, just to follow up, I didn't quite understand that. So if you're a restaurant without a liquor license and you want outdoor dining, what is the procedure?
You can still fill out the checklist. You can still fill out the application for outdoor dining, and we can approve that outdoor dining. The only part that wouldn't be approved would be an extension of licensed premises because there is no licensed premises.
Great.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a letter to the Board of Building Regulations and Standards. And I note that Ms. Cookman is with us. And I wonder if she would like to bring us up to speed on this. Hello, Bujah.
Sure. Thank you, Mike. Bujah Cookman, 94 Hubbard Street, co-founder of Mothers Out Front in Concord. And before I start, I just want to thank you all. It's so good to see you all looking well. And thank you for managing us all. And Stephen, you're on mute. But anyway, thank you so much. I, I mean, it's just unbelievable how well you've done. So appreciate it and know it's a ton of work. And at least one of you is still working when they thought maybe they wouldn't be at this stage, I think. So anyway, much, much appreciation. Thank you so much. I guess we still can't lose sight of what's happening with the climate. And this is a letter to the Massachusetts Board of Building Regulation and Standards. It's, this is supported by, obviously, by Mothers Out Front, but also I think Brian Folds has sent in a letter of support, Kate, as well as Carbon Free Concord, et cetera. We can't, we can't increase our standards here in Concord as, and part of the new CAB report, that's a recommendation, that we go to net zero and become fossil-free in our built environment until the state increases the code. And so this is a letter encouraging the Board of Building Regulation and Standards to adopt and encourage adoption of net zero building code. So it would be, it would be the next phase of the stretch code, which we as a town have already adopted. This is critical to achieving our Article 51 Concord Energy Goals, the guidelines we've put in place for the town. So we just want to keep the pressure on. There's legislation coming up at the State House. And we want to keep at it. So we're asking the town to sign the letter and send it to, it would be copied to Governor Baker, Speaker of the House, the Senate President, House Ways and Means Committee. Tammy, how do you say her last name? Has been in conversation with us about this as well. And Senator Barrett and the DOE R Commissioner. So all of those people would be copied on this letter. So that's the ask. And do you have any questions?
Susan?
Yeah, thank you, Bujah. It's a very comprehensive report that you submitted for us to submit to the state. I was wondering if there are other towns and cities in the Commonwealth that are doing similar things?
Yes. This is spearheaded by not just Mothers Out Front, but other organizations. I don't know the number, Susan, but I, I saw a list and there were at least 30 towns on that list. So yes.
Okay. Thank you. Jane? I was just going to offer that I'm on the energy committee, the state energy committee for the Sierra Club. And, you know, it's also many, many NGOs throughout the state, environmental organizations and others. So we would join many forward-thinking, climate-aware organizations and municipalities.
I mean, the legislative cycle is coming up now where these things will be coming up for vote. So it's a, it's a critical time.
Great. Are there any additional questions or comments about this matter? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay. Move to authorize the chair to send a letter to the Massachusetts Board of Building Regulation and Standards, urging them to update the current Massachusetts stretch code to a net zero stretch code with the EZ code as its basis.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call a roll? Susan, you were muted if you said something.
I didn't.
Ms. Ackerman? Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
I note that it passes unanimously. Thank you all. Thank you, Bujah, for joining us.
Thank you all. It's great to see you.
Great to see you too. Next item on our agenda is letter of support for the transfer fee legislation. Linda, can you bring us up to speed on this?
So why is this on the agenda now? Tomorrow is the deadline for a report out from committees. And we, as you recall, this is making progress on this. It's one of our objectives for our town, for our select board goals. Mike and I and myself, on a second occasion, testified before committees in the fall. This is just another step in that process. This, as you could see from the correspondence, it addresses not only some other bills coming from other communities that are recommending slightly different approaches in each of those bills to a local transfer fee for affordable housing. The objective is to have those reported out so that they will be amended and come up with something that allows maximum flexibility for all local communities, which would be easier than going through a lot of individual home rule petitions. In addition, the letter also encourages the home rule petitions. So as of this afternoon, I was aware of at least 35 individual administrators from municipalities who had signed on to this, in addition to some land trust, a community land trust. And those communities, many of them had already either filed their own home rule petitions in addition or signed on to this more general legislation. And then that included everything from places like Cambridge to Brookline, to Norwich, to Amherst, to Concord, to Somerville and others, Medford, I believe. And I'm probably forgetting some others. So this is just another step in the process.
You might, this transfer fee legislation has really started out quite small, but now there is really a considerable coalition of folks that are very actively pursuing this. And it's been quite remarkable to see, to see all the number of towns get behind this.
And in addition, Boston independently has signed on to this. So that's, that was significant when that happened.
Right. Are there any other comments about this matter? Seeing, yes, Jane?
I just wanted to know what the timing might be?
Mike, did you want to respond?
No.
Oh, okay. Tomorrow is the deadline for reporting out of the various committees where these bills are, not just our legislation, but a whole host of legislation. Whether that deadline is going to be extended or not, has it previously been extended, remains to be seen. But right now, we're operating as though we need to have this in by tomorrow.
Okay.
So hopefully it would, depending on how we vote, we'll try to act on it even today.
Thank you. Thank you, Linda and Mike, for your diligence where you keep pursuing this. It's a lot of work. We all appreciate it.
Thank you.
Without additional comments, I think we're ready for a motion.
Move to send a letter in support of transfer fee enabling legislation as drafted in our packets.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you. I note it passes unanimously. And Jeremy, if you could tee that letter up on Town Stationer and get it to me, I will make sure it is electronically and then through the regular postal service sent to all of the parties tomorrow.
That's good.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Concord Retirement.
Mike, excuse me, Mike. Can it also be transmitted by email to each of those offices? I have all the information.
That's what I meant by electronically.
Good, thank you. Sorry.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the Concord Retirement Board election results. I'm pleased to announce that Brian Whitney was elected to the retirement board. The next item on our agenda is committee nominations. So would the clerk please read the nomination?
Richard Founder of 399 Old Bedford Road to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2023.
All right, thank you. And two weeks from now, we will have him back on our agenda for an appointment. Next, the committee liaisons on reports. Let me start because I have just a simple one. The Who Carco Trust Committee met and went over a number of activities. Most importantly, then they met an executive session to make contributions to individuals and families. So Susan, I think I saw your hand. Would you like to go next? After you unmute yourself.
Okay, now I'm ready. The planning board met on June 9th, and they recommended to the ZBA that they approve application of Now Communities LLC for special permit for a residential PRD, planned residential development at 1651, 1657, and 165X Main Street. That is the parcels just beyond, if you're leaving Concord on the left, River, what is it called?
River Walk.
River Walk. It's the same developer. It's going to be 14 units, all-electric, studios to two bedrooms. With the back half of the property that goes down to the river will be conservation. There will be public access. They also, the planning board elected new officers to Kristen Ferguson as chair, Burton Flint vice chair, and Nathan Buzzdatt as clerk. And that was pretty much it. Concord Historical Commission met on the 11th, and they actually discussed the same property in a different, from a different vantage point, that they had issued a demolition delay for that property. And the developer came and asked for that to be shortened. And the Historical Commission agreed to it if they provided historical information about the buildings, photographs, elevations, plans, documentation that can be sent to the library. And as you know, the demolition delay, that the applicant could have chosen just to wait it out and not have to produce anything. There was another discussion, very similar, actually, the same discussion for 111 Ripley Hill Road. And the agreement between the Historical Commission and the developer was to, for the same thing, to get the history of the building, floor plans, elevations, and photographs also that would go to the library. They started a discussion on Article 48, which is the article that. started a discussion on Article 48, which is the article that changes the appointments to Historic Districts Commission from appointed by the library and appointed by the Concord Museum to an appointed by, from the Historical Commission. So, that's not, that discussion has just begun. They also did not issue a demolition delay for 15 Middle Street, which they said was, did not have the historic qualities that would warrant a demolition delay. Economic Vitality Committee met on Wednesday, June 10, and Stephen Cutter part of it. But one of the interesting things they said was about these, they applied for $300,000 for micro grants, which could be up to $10,000 per business, micro enterprise, sorry, with five or less FTEs. And when they looked at the states, there was a state listing of how many businesses that is in Concord, the surprising number was 800. So, you know, it's, people who have their own, like, you know, your accountant, or I'm guessing, I don't know exactly, but there were a lot of them. The grants can be used for working capital, cover business costs such as rent, staffing, and utilities, cannot be used for major equipment purchases or purchase of real property, construction activity. So, it's operating expense. There was a fairly lengthy discussion on helping the businesses, and Stephen has addressed that to a great degree with what he mentioned before about opening restaurants. There is one vacancy still on the committee, and I have a couple of candidates I'm going to approach, but I also wanted to let everyone know that there still is a vacancy, if anyone that's listening at home is particularly interested. And the last meeting last week was trustees of town donations. And it was a fairly standard meeting. The person who oversees the funds has changed, so there's a little confusion about that. But the question that came up, the chair, I told them that according to our amendment of APP 10, that members would stay in their, on their committee until town meeting. What's happened is the chair is moving out of Concord, so there will be a vacancy, and we'll need another member on that committee. That's it.
All right, thank you. Who would like to go next? Terry?
You're muted? Yep. Okay. The Bruce Freeman Rail Trail met for the first time in a while, and there's a lot of progress being made. Phase 2B, if you recall, goes across Route 2, and that's moving along very quickly now. So, they think they're going to have the culvert under Route 2 and the bridge over Route 2 finished by the end of the summer, which is really great.
It's going to go over to Cambridge Turnpike.
What's that?
Nothing. That was Linda talking.
You hope the Cambridge Turnpike--
Oh, I said they should go over to the Cambridge Turnpike.
Yeah, yeah.
That done.
Right, right. Okay. Phase 2C, we had scout Nolan Roberts, who completed a project for the bicycle fix-it station, which is very well done. And we have artist Nancy Lippi working with some other artists at the umbrella, where members from the community donated doors. And the project is called Go Outdoors, and the artists are painting the doors, and they're going to be hung all around at special points along the trail. And then Phase 2D is the last half mile down to Sudbury Line, and we think the design plans will be 100% finished very soon. So, there's a lot of really good progress with the Bruce Freeman Trail. The next, oh, Jane?
When would it then move into construction?
Phase 2D, the Sudbury? I don't know. I could find out. I'll let you know. The West Concord Junction Cultural District has several projects going on, and the biggest one they're wrestling with right now is the Porch Fest, which you'll recall is a big success last year. And it was originally scheduled to happen again this year, September 12. We had 1,000 people attend last year. So, they're really struggling. Should they do a scaled-back version, do it by Zoom, or just reschedule? And right now, they're kind of leaning toward rescheduling, because the biggest problem is how are these bands going to rehearse? You can spread out the public, or you could do a parade or something, or even do Zoom, but you can't have the bands rehearse right now without social distancing. So, they're kind of struggling with that, and more information to come. DPW, CPW, I guess I should call it, had a water sewer rate hearing, and there will be a slight increase for the average residential customer of about $14 per year, a very modest increase. And speaking of the Cambridge Turnpike, there's reporting that it's coming along well and getting ready to open pretty soon. No specific date, though, yet.
Actually, if you've had, I was down at Millbrook buying some plants, and it really looks quite amazing. I mean, that part there, there's another part closer up to Route 2 that I haven't been able to see, but the part right there by the Millbrook Nursery looks, looks pretty good.
Yeah.
It's a major, major undertaking, because it's, you know, not in a heavily past, it was a heavily traveled road, but if you weren't going on it, you wouldn't normally get out there unless you're going to Millbrook Farm. And it's been a massive undertaking for CPW, but I also say this last phase, CMLP really stepped up to help facilitate some utility relocations and stuff, and they, they don't get a lot of credit on public works projects using, public works gets the credit, but CMLP really helped out greatly on that. I'm still saying that. So, it's a, it's a great success story for, I think, the two departments working together.
All right, Jane?
Sorry.
Sorry. I have a couple more things. I attended the Zoom MBTA meeting, and the business from there is they usually do a five-year capital improvement plan, and this year, because of COVID-19, they're only going to do a one-year CIP. And then they'll try to get back to normal next year. And finally, I went to the CSEC meeting by Zoom, and Kate Hanley has been assisting them and CAB with the Climate Action and Resilient Plan, and there's a draft available for public comment on our website until June 22. They're looking for public comment. It also has a seven-minute intro video available on the website. And both CAB and CSEC might want to come together with Kate Hanley to present the final plan briefly at an upcoming select board meeting.
Jane? That's a, that's a great segue, Terry. Thank you. Because one of the pieces I was going to report on in great detail is the Climate Action Resiliency, Mitigation Resiliency Plan. It's part, it's the Climate Action Advisory Board's charge is dual-focused. It's both the strategic implementation of Article 51 and working through our resiliency goals. This, the plan, the scope, which includes both mitigation and resiliency, prioritizes actionable solutions for reducing greenhouse gas emissions while also improving the community's resilience. And the grant that funded it came through the state's MVP Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, which is focused on resilience to climate change. So, it's, it's a segment of CAB's larger charge. And as both Mike and Terry mentioned, comments are due the 22nd, and the full, the, the final draft will be pulled together and put together towards the end of the month. So, let's see, what can I tell you about it? Once the plan is completed, and I, as was mentioned, go to the, go to the website and look it up, because it's not a small undertaking. It's a fairly significant body of work. And Concord has a lot of great expertise in this area, so I would strongly advise anybody that's watching and has some time at hand to dig in. And afterwards, once the plan is complete, the Climate Action Advisory Board plans to continue its charge to advise the town on its climate goals, helping both the priorities of the plan and the blueprints specifically, as well as, again, the larger piece of how do we, how do we now meet our Article 51 climate goals? So, it's sort of the first piece of that, of that committee's charge, but not the entire piece. And I think there's been some confusion on that going forward, or previously, and I wanted to allay it going forward. Let's see, what other areas can I report on? We've discussed the White Pond and the concerns there. The only thing I wanted to add to Kate and Stephen's comments was also to remind everybody, White Pond isn't just our White Pond Beach Association, but also the other side of Satcham's Cove. There's been enormous time and attention paid to alleviating our, the runoff and the mistreatment of the trails there. Anybody, I had the privilege of walking around the pond recently, and the fences that have gone up, the work that's been done there is really impressive. And it's a combination, it's work that's been done on the conservation piece of it. But again, as a select board, the larger body of the Cove area is a select board or a municipal, a municipal body. And all of it contributes to the health of the pond. So, there have been concerns reiterated about misuse of the Cove. That's a historic issue, and one that we, we don't have the ranger's support for at this point. So, we need to stay on top of it as a citizenry and remind ourselves that, you know, if we, if we create the erosion, we're going to destroy our own, our own water body. And also, there've been reports of loud music, et cetera, et cetera. I think it goes into other things that have been reported at the NRC, which is clearly all, to my way of thinking, there are examples of the tensions that exist when too many people have been stuck at home for too long, and I have complete empathy for it. But we are seeing increased infractions on a lot of different town trails specifically. Right now, there's a discussion going on with a series of illegal bike ramps and jumps that were constructed along the side of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. And that's a, a discussion underway led by the Natural Resources Committee, or the Natural Resources Director. But it's, it's, you know, I think the appeal from the NRC is that everybody really think through the way we conserve and preserve all of our, all of our different trails and bodies of recreational and conservation land. It goes beyond keeping a mask on when you can't social distance. It's about the treatment of those trails. Mountain bikes seem to be the bigger concern right now, but, you know, I'm sure that, that all of this is evidence of people wanting to get out and use the land that they can, they have access to. And I think there's a general feeling of understanding, but nevertheless, needing to crack down on that and minimize any trail vandalism. On the, so that would be the NRC report. The Historic Districts Commission has been--
Jane, let me interrupt you. I'd just, to say, I think I recall that NRC actually issued a letter--
Yes.
--telling that, whomever that person was, to dismantle all of that and return the land to the way it was found.
Yes, that's an ongoing action right now. Unfortunately, that's not the only place that, that mountain biking has been impacting the trails. It's just the one that has had an actual infraction, a proceeding identified.
For the interruption.
No, I appreciate it. Let's see, the HDC, the Historic District Commission has been generally quiet. And let's, I'm missing my last piece here. Oh, and then tomorrow night will be the Board of Health meeting. One of the things I wanted to tip my hat to, all of our economic vitality work, because, again, in our hopes, especially with the long-range plan of knitting all of the town efforts towards similar goals, I know that the, I know that Kate Collins got to me requesting an ability to engage with the Board of Health on some of the things that various businesses in town are thinking about, as a way of supporting both businesses in town, but also making sure that the regulations and the Board of Health's vision for going forward are internalized. And that, that's clearly a result of the cooperation that's, that's building across places, and I would, I'd strongly applaud it. So, Susan, if I see your fingerprints on that, thank you. But I think it's a, it's a great, it's a great reaction. That's all for me.
Susan, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I did. Thanks, Jane, for talking about that. I realized I forgot one important thing about the Economic Vitality meeting, is the director of the Community Chest was there, because they have launched a fund that is, you can donate tax, and get a tax donation credit if you donate to this fund in the Community Chest to help small businesses. They're in the fundraising stage now. They have raised $19,000. There's a $15,000 match, and they're going for as much as they can get. They have not developed yet the criteria for awarding the grants, but they expect they'll be between $3,000 and $5,000, and I hope to have a fairly painless process for doing it, but that's down the road.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Linda?
I met with the CHA, Concord Housing Authority, this morning. They are in the position, as they are each year this time, to approve their budget, which includes both state and federal guidelines. And since state guidelines haven't been yet issued, and won't be probably for months, they'll have to approve it again. The ZBA meeting did receive the approval from the Planning Board for 1651, 1657. They had several issues that they were interested in further discussing, and they're going to do a site visit on that property. And then Nuclear Metals Starment Reuse Planning Committee met and talked about what form the public outreach on the, the required public outreach on the final report, what format that was going to take. And so, and they made very good headway on that process. And so within, they made very good headway on that process. And the public should be looking in about two weeks for a survey on their concurrence with the plan or not. And so comments will be solicited.
Great. Thank you. All right. We continue to stream correspondence, primarily a number of pieces of correspondence aimed at questions about whether the police should be wearing body cams or not. I pass those along to the chief and a couple of pieces of correspondence to do with Esther Brooke Road. So are there any public comments? I don't see anybody lighting up. Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
So second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Ekman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
I note the motion passes unanimously. We will, the select board will meet again a week from today at four o'clock via Zoom. Thank you all for coming today. I look forward to seeing you. Goodbye.
Bye.